I'd like to call the October Board Meeting for LaFouche Parish School Board to order. We start with the meeting station, on the way to West District 9, follow by the end of the buses and back onto the Owl Archer District 13.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today, asking you for your grace, peace, and love. While our community has shaken, has been shaken by catastrophic events, that our faith in you be stronger than ever. Blessed are all families affected by Hurricane Ida, and allow our school district to build back better than before. Let us never forget to rely upon you in both good times and bad. Give our people the strength to continue on the face of adversity, and make everyone come to know the endless love for each of us. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Amen.
Roll call?
Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Bell.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Fatima.
Here.
Mr. Bootery.
Here.
Dr. Gia.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Dufresne.
Here.
Mr. Schwest.
Here.
Mr. Blaisos.
Here.
Mr. Plannis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
And Ms. Shauvin. The other four.
We'll go ahead and begin with Ms. Christine Russell, LaFouche Parish District Attorney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for allowing me to come here this evening. You know, I look forward every year to come and talk about our school programs and how we're going to partner with you all and be in the classrooms. Last year, we had to sort of change it up and do a lot of virtual things. This year, we were prepared to have a lot of virtual programs, but of course, because of the storm, we couldn't. So, we thought long and hard about how can we help our teachers? How can we still help our students and still have a presence in our schools? So, our office came up with an idea called "The Pantry," and we contacted Mr. Martin, and we're blessed to have him onboard, and we contacted all of the principals throughout our parish. We came up with our little logo, "The Pantry," and the concept is, we have received so many supplies from district attorneys, association itself, with individual district attorneys throughout the state and other organizations, and we're putting them all in our office, and we thought, how can we really get to the people who need it, and how can we get to our children? And so, we thought, we can start a pantry in our schools. We will stock it, and they'll let us know when they need more supplies, and that way, our teachers can identify which students maybe need something brought home, and they can do that. So, for the next few months, "The Pantry" will be in most of our schools. Of the open schools, we have seven who are ready to go. Tomorrow, I want to wait and speak to all of you. Tomorrow, we're going to start delivering and setting up our pantries. We have a list, let me look through it, a list of items that we're going to give to each school. We have four schools so far that are not even opening yet, but they're ready to go. Once they are up and running, we will be there and we will set up our pantry. We will also deliver these bags, and then we have forms for our teachers and our principals to fill out and send back with the bags, so that we can refill them and restock them. And so, while we can't be in the classroom to teach our students the things that we wanted to do about the decision-making, we still can have an impact on their lives. So, we just greatly appreciate your support. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for, you know, of course, saying yes to us. We hope it really works, and that we can keep the pantry for months, maybe years to come, and we're going to start it. So, if you have any questions, please ask. If not, our staff is really excited. We certainly prosecute and go to court. We love our schools, and we love to see our children, so we will be there starting tomorrow.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much, and thank you.
Before we begin our agenda items, we'd like to have your call from Superintendent Martin for a current update on the post-storm status.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to keep everyone up to date with where we are, the Timidno area schools have been up and running for a week and a half, and we have been able to successfully combine Bayou Buff Elementary and Chack Bay Elementary with the help of also Sixth Fourth Middle School, right? So, we've got the students at Bayou Buff Elementary in Chack Bay Elementary and Sixth Fourth Middle School, those principals have just done a remarkable job. And truly, it's been a team effort from the custodial staff, the clerical staff, the cafeteria workers, everybody has made this thing work. And it is not an easy feat to move a school into two other schools and to make it run. So, the classroom teachers have been able to accept those students, and it's really cool to watch. I brought the state superintendent there, and even a reporter, Rob Mason, did a story there, if you've got cable, unlike me, you're able to see it, about how accommodating the school has been. Throughout our Timidno community, we have a lot of people who are still suffering, and so what we're going to just present is going to be a valuable asset. We've got folks that had apartment complexes and many, many units that are now displaced. And so, while the Timidno community when you drive around doesn't look that impacted, there are absolutely families that are impacted, but our schools are running well. The same is true in the Central LaFouche area. We were just able to open the Central LaFouche schools. They're only in their third day of operation, but my kids are telling me it's going quite well for them. They were able to start Monday, and we are doing quite well there as well. Still some challenges with the buildings. In the Central LaFouche area, we have temporary roofs that have been put on, and if some of you have a temporary roof at your house, you know, sometimes they don't, they don't work as quite as well as the permanent roof. So, when we get huge rain events, we've had some minor issues that have to be addressed, and we're addressing them as they appear. Our contractors have been extremely responsive when we see a problem. If a teacher identifies a problem, we have a set of events that's in place through the chain of command, through the principal, to Mr. Delcum, and Ms. Hodson, and to Mr. Blaisos, and then to the contractors. We try to avoid the number of people that can reach out to contractors, so that they can respond in a systematic way, but they have been able to respond quickly. We've had issues that have been responded to. I'll use Racedon Upper Elementary as an example. I was in that building. I saw some problems with water intrusion, and the contractors were on the site before I got in my truck to fix the problem. So, it's not perfect, but it's working. The South LaFouche area, obviously, is the biggest area of concern. We've got major problems at Narco Rose Elementary, Golden Meadow Middle School, and South LaFouche High School. The South LaFouche High School though, is moving along very, very quickly. Walls are coming out, and walls are going up as fast as they're coming out. And it's more than just walls, though, right? So, we're talking about power suppression systems, kitchen systems, and a whole host of things that have to happen before the school can be up and running. But we still feel confident that the kids will be able to return on the 18th, the staff returning, the principals and the full-time staff returning on the 13th. The same is true for the Golden Meadow schools. We're combining Golden Meadow Eliminaries into one elementary, and the Golden Meadow Middle School is going to go to the Golden Meadow Upper Elementary. I don't know if I said that correctly. The middle school's going to the Upper Elementary. Athletics and some of the extracurricular events for those middle school students are still going to happen at the original school site, because we hope to have part of the gym in a place where those things can happen there. But that is still, in some cases, days, and in other cases, weeks away. So, what I would say is, be patient, because there's still a tremendous amount of work that has to be done. And permanent repairs are at least one to two years away, and it may be possible that some permanent repairs are as far as three to four years away. And the reason is because of materials and labor shortage. The architects are describing to us that this is a perfect storm in terms of material shortages, because there already was, prior to this, a shortage of building materials. When you add Hurricane Ida to the pandemic, it's a problem. And so, it's not that contractors aren't willing to do it. It's securing the materials and the labor to come in and do it, all the while competing for the work that needs to be done in Terabone, St. Charles, St. James, St. John, and Jefferson. As an example, I didn't know that Jefferson even had damage, because I've been so absorbed with LaFouche Parish. The superintendent is saying, and Jefferson told me he's got over $300 million in damage. And so, this is going to be an expansive undertaking for not just the Fouch Parish, but the entire region. So, I'm not answering any questions about where we are.
Jared, do you want to explain the financing, how this is going to turn out? Complicated?
So, we have spent millions of dollars on the mitigation. The mitigation is drying out the buildings and getting them ready for occupancy. It's a very complex process that's being driven by both the insurance company with their industrial hygienist, as well as water mitigation and mold remediation, and making sure all of those things are done according to the highest of standards. It's in a very expensive process. We're talking 200 to 300 contractors working 24 hours a day for the last 30 days. Then, we transition into the building phase. But once we transition to that building phase, we will likely have spent all of our insured dollars. What I mean by that is, we have as an institution around $20 million in property damage insurance, property insurance. That's going to be gone. That will be eaten up by the time we begin permanent repairs. So, what has to happen is, we're going to have to partner with the disaster management consultant team to start filing FEMA claims, get money from FEMA, spend money from FEMA, get reimbursed from FEMA, and then go and repeat that process over and over and over again. This is going to be tens and tens of what's called PWs, or project worksheets, where we're going to have to go out and seek funding. There's also the opportunity, and I'm getting, I head up myself, but some districts have entered into, it's basically a loan from the bond commission, where you get fronted money and then pay it back as you get FEMA. But that will be for another day. Right now, we're still in immediate response and reaction mode to get the buildings up and running, and we'll begin permanent repairs. We'll be working with our consultants to make the connected dots between where we are and permanently fixing all of our facilities, which right now, the architects estimate to be at $70 million in permanent repair, plus architecture fees puts you at 77, plus mitigation puts you at 97. And that's if everything goes well. That's 97 million. Yes, sir?
A couple of things, Beth. I don't know if you're aware that on Friday, Energy made a report that at 9:00 a.m. for the next five hours on Friday, that the energy be cut off. Are you aware of that?
I was told that stuff, no.
Okay, us too. So, I just want to make you aware as well, in case any of the schools. We had talked a little bit, maybe you can explain a little bit about the fact that down the bay, we do not have Wi-Fi, we don't have internet or anything like that as yet. So, how will the students that will be going home be able to accommodate those students when there is no Wi-Fi or internet?
Very good question. So, first, we are suspending homework as a practice in LaFouche Parish until told otherwise, right? So, this is not only a true story in the lower LaFouche area. The internet challenges are everywhere, and not only for internet reasons, but for housing reasons. Some families are living in campers in their driveway, and so, while we are, in some, for the worst case, tents. If we can't teach the children the eight hours we've got, then we're doing something wrong. So, homework is being suspended. The issue, though, is the high school students that are going every other day have to navigate the online curriculum on those days they're not in school. So, Mr. Chauvin is securing the internet mobile hotspots, Verizon-powered Wi-Fi, and the high school students are all going to be issued that, all with their Chromebook, so that they can keep up with their studies on the days that they're not physically in class.
Any further questions? If not, we'll continue with the agenda items. Item two, approval of four consent agenda item. A, approve of four consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held Wednesday, August 4, 2021. C, minutes of board in-service held Wednesday, August 11, 2021. D, minutes of special board meeting, public hearing, and budget adoption held Monday, September 6, 2021. E, minutes of special board meeting held Monday, September 6, 2021. Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Fatima. Second by Ms. Frau Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board comment? Mr. Dufresne?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to add another item to the four consent agenda items. This is for observances from the month of October. The first is National Principals Month, which is October 1 through 31st. National Custodial Workers Recognition Day, which is October 2nd, and LaFouche Parish Bus Safety, School Bus Operator, and School Bus Monitor Appreciation Week, October 18 through the 22nd. Hold up to me that motion.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Ranger Schwest. Any comment? We have to hand vote to make sure, to add this item to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the agenda item? Anyone opposed? Okay, item added. So, just to recap, the item, the agenda item is National Principals Month, October 1 through 31st, 2021. National Custodial Workers Recognition Day, October 2nd, 2021. LaFouche Parish Bus Safety, School Bus Operator, and School Bus Monitor Appreciation Week, October 18 to 22nd, 2021. Okay, can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Archer. Second it by Mr. Joe DuPlanus. Any comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Okay, we'll go ahead and hand vote. All those in favor? Any oppose? Very good. Item three, approval of policy and procedure committee recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Mr. Bernard?
Yes, Superintendent Martin, Madam President, to approve revisions to policy J-C-B-A-B, student drunk and alcohol use, so move.
Mr. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Bootery. Any public comment? Mr. Phillips, since it's been a while since we've done this, could you just give us a brief overview?
Yeah, so, in July, we came to the board to consider approving several different discipline policies. This one, we discovered there was an error in it. Full thought confirmed that error, as, and the error was that a student who was charged with being in possession or use of alcohol was required to be suspended and recommended for expulsion, when that was a permissive, that was permissive, not required. So, we had to change the verbiage in the policy to reflect that change. So, that particular violation of the code of conduct is not required or permissive, and that's what the new regulation reflects.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item four, approval of Land and Facilities Management Committee recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, August 17, 2021. Mr. Schwest?
Thank you, Madam President. A, to accept a change order to request to add 22 additional days to the contract due to inclement weather for the month of July, 2021, for the new Timidno Middle School project. So move.
Motion by Ms. Schwest. Seconded by Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
B, to authorize hiring Catherine O'Goodwin, Lublin Engineering, Robert Ugly, for the design and bidding for the new fresh air unit to be installed at the library at Timidno Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Schwest. Seconded by Ms. Robin Bell. Any public comment? Any board comment? We'll vote. Motion carries.
C, to authorize hiring Groh Flores Positelli for the design and bidding of the new handicap lift to be installed at Timidno Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Schwest. Seconded by Mr. Owl Archer. Any public comment? Any board comment? We'll vote. Motion carries.
D, to consider awarding A1 MAX services as the only responsive and responsible bidder for the district dustmaw in max services for a three-year term. So move.
Motion by Ms. Schwest. Seconded by Ms. Frau Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board comment? We'll vote. Motion carries. Item five, approval of insurance committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, August 18, 2021. Ms. Fatima?
To approve the renewal quote for Mr. John Norris, Norris Wish Management, under LaFouche Parish School Board, workers compensation excess insurance in the amount of $59,096. So move.
Motion by Ms. Fatima. Seconded by Mr. Bootery. Any public comment? Any board comment? We'll vote. Motion carries.
B, to approve the renewal of the Humana Advantage Plan for 2022. So move.
Motion by Ms. Fatima. Seconded by Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Any board, any public comment? Excuse me. Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item six, approval of finance committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, August 18, 2021. Ms. DuPlanus?
Thank you, Madam President. To approve bids received, Marie, manufactured toner can take appropriate action. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlanus. Seconded by Mr. Bernard. Ms. Vias?
This was a straightforward line item bid, so it's going to be awarded to multiple vendors, and it's going to be the best cost for the district, and of course, approved by IT Department and JNE.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item seven, A, to consider authorizing the superintendent to request permission from the district attorney to employ special counsel, namely Ms. Kendra S. Elliott of Immigration Support Services, and adopting a resolution requesting from the Attorney General the hiring of Ms. Elliott pending the approval of the district attorney. Before we ask for a motion, Mr. Bell?
Superintendent Martin, President Babin, board members, each year, the board is authorized, is asked to authorize the superintendent to request permission to hire, namely, Ms. Kendra Elliott, to process all of our H1D visas and our green cards on behalf of the board. Attached, you will find a copy of the resolution. It's all in place, and I'm asking for your approval. And this is for you.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Boujwa. Seconded by Ms. Robin Bell. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll, Mr. Bootery?
This one, as a, as a new board member, I'm not really familiar with this. On whose behalf are we processing these green card applications? Are these for students?
No, sir. They are for our employees.
For our employees?
Yes.
We have employees that need that, okay.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? We'll vote. Motion carries. B, to consider approving revisions to an administrative special education liaison and special education mentor/teacher job description. Mr. Bell?
Attached, you will find two job descriptions. These are job descriptions. These are not new positions. We have made some changes on these job descriptions to reflect some tasks that are already being, being performed by the employees. So, it's not, it's not new positions.
Any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion? Mr. Dufresne. Motion by Mr. Dufresne. Seconded by Mr. Owl Archer. Okay. Now, any public comment? Any board comment? We'll vote. Motion carries. Item C, to consider approving the 2021-2022 Personnel Evaluation Program. Once again, Mr. Bell?
Attached is the 21-21-22 Personnel Evaluation Program. Annually, the board approves this plan for changes. At this time, there are no changes, but we anticipate that it will be meeting to make changes to our personnel evaluation as they did last year. They made changes because of the pandemic. This year, they're probably going to look to make changes because of pandemic and also Hurricane Ida. So, once they make these changes, we will reflect these changes in our local plan. So, I'm asking for your approval.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Fatima. Seconded by Mr. Barry Blaisos. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Thank you. D, to receive a report on the 2021-2022 student enrollment figures for all of LaFouche Parish schools. Ms. Bell, Scott?
Madam President, Superintendent Martin, members of the board, all of you have been forwarded by Ms. Martin as, oh, they have a copy of some trend data, some historical trend data since 2014 pertaining to enrollment. Hopefully, most of you had a chance to look at that. I know Mr. Schwest did, because he caught the one error that I made. So, thank you guys for looking at that. But the minimum foundation program is mostly looking to talk about very briefly. That formula was adopted by Louisiana Board of Elementary Education, that's been approved by the legislature, determines the cost, a minimum foundation program of education in all public elementary and secondary schools, and helps to allocate the funds equitably to school districts. The MFP is the largest source of revenue to LaFouche Parish School Board and its general fund. After all required mandates are met, the LaFouche Parish School Board has the flexibility to spend the funding to spend the funding to meet the needs of schools and students. Because the MFP is directly tied to student enrollment, the LaFouche Parish School Board faces a challenge when there's a decline in the district's student population. The Louisiana Department of Education obtains student enrollment counts twice during the fiscal year. Once is October first that we need to submit, and the second is February first. Any fluctuation in the enrollment count from February, from October first to February first requires a mid-year adjustment reflecting either an increase or decrease in the MFP funding as determined by the changes in the enrollment. The second count on February first is the count used to implement the MFP formula for the following fiscal year. You might consider that our money count. The current base per people amount in the MFP formula is four thousand and fifteen dollars. The unofficial October one, twenty twenty-one MFP student enrollment count is thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. This is a decrease of two hundred and four students compared to the October first, twenty twenty official MFP student enrollment count, which was thirteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-three. Keep in mind that pre-K and other preschool children are not funded through the MFP formula. Our total student enrollment for October first, which includes those pre-K students, is fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine, which is a decrease of one hundred and eighty-six students from last year's total enrollment count of fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Please note that the October first, twenty twenty-one student enrollment counts are not official until around November nineteenth. At that time, our, is when student information system data is due to be cleaned up for any errors. Also, please keep in mind that students who may not have returned since the storm may affect these totals. Child Welfare and Attendance have a process in place right now to attempt to locate students not returning since the storm, so that appropriate state exit codes are used consistently throughout our district. We do anticipate that our February one count will increase as families able to return to their homes. And that includes my report of the twenty-one MFP.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Boudery, seconded by Ms. Julie Plannus. Any public comment? Any board comment? To receive a report on proposals received for emergency project management services and take appropriate action. Mr. Martin?
Madam President, the existing contract with our emergency project management service consultants was set to expire in December of this year. The LaFouche Parish School District sent out a request for proposals into the Central Auction House for emergency project management services. The committee independently reviewed the proposals, and we established that the items that we would be looking for in these proposals were the proven ability to perform the given tasks, a track record of success, and other government agency claims, a robust and dynamic team, and the ability to perform timely services were the attributes of most importance. The recommended action is to approve All South Consulting as our emergency project management services consultants for a period of three years. The experience with FEMA claims is the number one reason. The LaFouche Parish School District had over one hundred and ten open project worksheets when we first partnered with All South. They were able to successfully close them out and secure federal funding associated with them. There is a history of successful claims management with other government agencies. All South has worked for St. John and Baptist School Board, Blackman Parish Schools Correction, Blackman Parish Government, the City of Gonzalez, the Terrible Parish School District, Ascension Parish Schools, and the St. Benoit Parish Government. They also brought together a portfolio with a diverse team. The All South team has a wide range of experts that are able to manage complex projects, engineers, accountants, construction management specialists, and many others are part of a robust team capable of managing both the claims and the management of themself. So again, the recommended action is All South Consulting.
Motion by Ms. Mary Retita, seconded by Mr. Randy Schloss. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item eight, memorial resolutions. A, Ms. Marie Benard, retired teacher. Mr. Benard?
Yes, Ms. Marie Benard was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-third, nineteen forty-three as a teacher at Grayson High School. She also worked as a teacher at Tibodale Elementary School and W. S. O'Farrell Elementary School during her career. Mrs. Benard retired on June first, nineteen seventy-three, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty years. And on a side note, she was my aunt. She was an outstanding educator, a deeply religious individual who gave herself to both of those things, education and religion. And just for those who live in Tibodale, she was the wife of a very famous community, a leader, marshal, fire chief, Mr. Doody Benard. If you remember Doody, Marie was-
Who didn't love Doody?
Good man, everybody knew him. Thank you.
B, Ms. Joyce Robichaud, retired teacher. Ms. Val Boujwa?
Ms. Joyce Robichaud was hired on August twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-five as a teacher at St. Charles Elementary School. Ms. Robichaud retired on May thirty-first, nineteen seventy-seven, having served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-two years. As a side note, she did live in Montegoor, and she has two children, father in footsteps, Nikki, a freshman, and Ken, a recent school, or teachers in LaFouche Parish. Her son Ken actually ended his career as a principal at five or higher.
C, Mr. Eugene Fowles, retired school bus driver. Mr. Blaisos?
Mr. Eugene Fowles was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September thirteenth, nineteen seventy-two, as a school bus driver. Mr. Fowles retired on August first, two thousand, having served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-eight years.
D, Ms. Mary Broussard, retired child nutrition technician. Mr. Al Orchard?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Mary Broussard was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-ninth, nineteen sixty-six as a child nutrition technician at South LaFouche High School. Ms. Broussard retired on June tenth, June first, nineteen eighty, and has served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of fourteen years. Madam President, I also like to add that Ms. Broussard was I think thirty, she was the one.
Thank you, Mr. Benard.
Thank you.
E, Ms. Paula Garza, retired teacher. Mr. Benard?
Yes, Ms. Paul Garza was hired as a teacher at Cut Off Elementary School on August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-nine. She also taught the Haverly of LaRue's Upper Elementary, but actually, at the time, it was LaRue's Middle School. And the reason for that is because she taught on my staff at LaRue's Middle. So that's why I knew that. And the Special Education District Number One Center during her career. Ms. Garza retired on June first, two thousand and twelve, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-three years. And I'd just like to add, working with her, she was an outstanding educator, and in all respect, and not only as an educator, but also as a community leader as well. Funny person, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Benard.
Madam President, if I may add, I have a question. Worked with Mrs. Garza as well, great teacher, great person, always has enough. We attended Southern Church together. They connected to us, and we also worked in the Bible school community. And she was very fond and very active in the church, and so she's been with us.
F, Mr. Carl Petrie, retired teacher. Mr. Orchard?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Carl Petrie was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-second, nineteen eighty-eight as a teacher at LaRue's Cut Off Junior High School. He also taught at Central LaFouche High School and South LaFouche High School. Mr. Petrie retired on October tenth, two thousand and thirteen, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-five years. I also like to add, Madam President, man, this passive of Mr. Petrie was a shock as well as Ms. Garza. He was also known as Carl Rowte, always called Rowte. A great person, we were just chatting together a few months ago, and this is a great shock in his wife, Ms. Marie, also, who was in the board, we called her in the system, a very teacher. So we leave behind his wife, Ms. Petrie.
Thank you, Mr. Orchard.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, Mr. Benard.
Also, I'd like to add that, it's my recollection, Row was also a school board member. And in addition to that, his wife, Marie, did teach at LaRue's Middle School, so I knew them personally very well. And Row did serve on this board for a good number of years.
Thank you, Mr. Benard. Um, G, Ms. Louise Pellegrin, retired janitor. Mr. Orchard?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Louise Pellegrin was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twelfth, nineteen eighty-two as a janitor at LaRue's Elementary School. Ms. Pellegrin retired July sixth, two thousand and six, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-four years.
Thank you. H, Ms. Genevieve Doue, retired paraprofessional. Mr. Benard?
Uh, yes. Ms. Genevieve Doue was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August third, nineteen eighty-nine as a paraprofessional at LaRue's Middle School. Okay, LaRue's Upper. Ms. Doue retired from the LaFouche Parish School District on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, having served the LaFouche Parish School System for a total of thirty years. Side note, I had the good fortune of working with her as well as an administrator. She always dedicated to her students, a true professional, and she'll be missed. Thank you.
Madam President, I also had the opportunity to witness her eight hundred relationships with her. Great person, and her husband also is a former teacher, he's a middle American middle school, who passed away also, so she is honored to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Ms. Corley Smith, retired teacher. Ms. Retita?
Ms. Corley Smith retired by the LaFouche Parish School District on October fourth, nineteen thirty-seven as a teacher at Galliano Elementary School. She also taught at St. Charles Elementary School during her career. Ms. Smith retired on June first, nineteen seventy-three, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-six years. And I'd like to add that she was one hundred and five.
J, Mr. Donald Uzay, retired teacher. Mr. Barry Blaisos?
Mr. Donald Uzay was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty-nine as a teacher at LaRue's Cut Off Junior High and Upper Elementary School. He also taught at South LaFouche High School during his career. Uzay retired September first, nineteen seventy-nine, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty years.
K, Tyron Poindexter, student. Tyron Poindexter was a seventh grade student at Golden Meadow Middle School. Tyron was the son of Tekeba and Tyron Poindexter. The members of the LaFouche Parish School Board deeply deplore the untimely loss of Tyron and all of his family, our deepest sympathies. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be reported on a special page of our medical book. Nine, tentative dates of future meetings. A, Policy and Procedure Committee, Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. B, Transportation Committee, Tuesday nineteenth, Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. C, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. D, Insurance Committee, Wednesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. E, Finance Committee, Wednesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. F, Academics Committee, Wednesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. G, Advisory Committee, Monday, November first, twenty twenty-one. And H, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, November third, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Benard?
Yeah, if I may, I guess I should ask the superintendent this, who is giving the overview. Are there any funds available that we might use to assist our teachers in restoring of their classrooms? I know that a lot of our teachers now are having a hard time just taking care of their own houses, much less the classrooms that might have been unfortunately destroyed during the class, during the hurricane. Was there any thought helping those teachers at schools that were particularly hit by the storm?
The short answer is yes. We've got an outpouring of support from communities all over the South. Mr. Dean Gentry, who couldn't be here and was managing it for us, but we're already in the process of Bayou Boffin in particular. We had a lot of wind damage, but the contacts in Bayou Boffin, you know, a lot of them unfortunately had to be discarded because it reflected. So, long story short, Mr. Benard, yes, we're going to have a process to attempt to identify the most critical things that got damaged, but I also wanted to brag on Remilian Parish for a second. It's not related to your question, but something I failed to mention. Remilian Parish Public Schools, at football games and various things, has been raising money for the families of LaFouche Parish. They've raised thirty-six thousand dollars. That's going to come in the form of small gift cards that are going to be distributed to children in our schools directly from their school's counselors based on need. So as counselors and teachers are working with children and identify people in need, we're going to be giving those funds directly to families directly impacted by this, and it's just a tremendous outpouring of support. Dean's having a hard time keeping up with the contributions of BMO. It's a good problem.
So we'll help our teachers.
Yes. Yes.
I just have one comment. I just, again, I know we said it before, but I can't thank Mr. Martin and his staff and our principals and our teachers enough for the job that they're doing in getting our schools ready and getting our children ready for the classes. It's just, I know it's a monumental task. I know they're tired because they have things at their houses that they have to get together, but we just, you know, have to let them know how much we appreciate them and support them in returning to school.
I appreciate the accolades, but they really need to be given at the school level. Our team is doing a great job in here, and certainly not discounting what's happening in this building, but, you know, Gay Sheremee has been in that building in shorts and a t-shirt probably every day the last couple of weeks, and she's not the only principal doing that. She's not the only educator doing that. A lot of grassroots work we're going into making these buildings ready, but it's a balancing act between going too quickly and providing the service that the community needs. And so in the South LaFouche area, striking that balance between the community being ready to be able to make school a priority in their life and providing the service that we're called to do is what we're faced with right now.
And of course, we can't forget our bus drivers, our secretaries, our cafeteria staff, our janitorial staff, I mean, just everybody working together. It's really a small miracle, a big miracle that you've done.
They're bending over backwards to make this thing happen. They're bending over backwards. Every, every member of this team.
While we're talking about that, I would like to add something. We had a very unusual circumstance last week with a very bad accident, and we had students at Chagby Elementary that were literally at school way later than they usually were. We had buses that were stuck in the traffic of the accident, and so while we were coming in under the storm, and like you said, everybody had everything going on at home, the faculty and staff of both Chagby Elementary and teachers from Bayou Boffin Elementary that were there pulled together, and some of them were at school with children until seven P.M. They took care of them, they handed out snacks, they fed them, and in true LaFouche Parish norm, they took care of our kids way beyond the call of the day's duty. So while you're thinking about, you know, everyone, please, you know, we'd like to pack them on back as well. Very unusual circumstances, but they handled it with grace and joy. It was very welcome. Mr. Orchard?
Thank you, Madam President. And it is, what Ms. Retita was alluding to, with the thanks to the staff and the faculty, also the dissemination of the communications from the front office, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Gentry, Mr. Martin, was very efficient, I find, even though it was limited to us, however we got, it probably anything. But getting information out in a cross manner, during the storm after storms, are crucial in a very important administration.
Second, okay.
Also, with the destruction the storm caused and the housing issues, especially the South, with the kids, they may not have- but the kids, they may not have uniforms now, so it's understandable they can kind of never have their clothing until they can use it.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make you a little clear.
I'm glad.
And supplies, you know, they may not have supplies if you find that because of the damage.
We're going to remove barriers to get kids into school, and if a uniform is a barrier, that, that's not going to stop us. Now, we are going to provide the uniforms eventually. We've got, at Central LaFouche High School right now, 30 students that, that don't have uniforms, and they're at school today. They're wearing the clothes that they have, but we have a, a process in place. We have a partnership with Jakes, a uniform supplier, and, and, and their own backorder. And as soon as we get the uniform, we're going to provide that to those families so that we can provide that service. It was one of the reasons why we wanted to keep our uniform requirement in place so that we could provide the clothing to the families that needed it in a timely way. But any student that does not have it, come to school. We're going to, we're going to service them no matter what.
And you'd like that to know.
Absolutely.
Next person, that partnership is that limited to certain areas of the parish or effective outside the parish?
Oh, it's, it's, this is a district-wide program. I use Central LaFouche as an example because I was there today. District-wide program through the Jimmy O'Clay's office, but the principals are running it. So if anybody in, in your area asks you about this, all a family has to do is contact the school and speak to the principal.
Yeah, let that information be known too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Plazos?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have to send a special thanks out to some small children at Salford Elementary School, outside Lake Charles, last year they were affected by Laura. And, oh, my, my wife's friend lives here in Tibodale. She teaches at Salford Elementary. And they, her kids got together and did a little fundraiser, and they raised, I think it was $817 in a day. And they sent it our way, which we distributed out to a lot of families in Lockwood. It, it truly put to the disaster, but it sure is good to see lots of good happens. And in our area, I'd like to also thank a bunch of men and women from Latvia who also chipped in. Me and my next door neighbor, I don't know how many hamburgers we cooked, hot dogs, chicken for our community, and how many kids I saw in my, with their parents. And I'd just like to thank them publicly for what they've done. They didn't ask for a dollar. They literally just showed up one day and said, hey, we're cooking. And they did it, and there's a restaurant in Sunset, which is outside of Latvia, that donated, I think, 900 leg quarters one day with rice, dress, and everything else to, just to support our community. And there are still probably numerous others that I'm sure we can go on and on, different churches and different organizations down by it. But I, I like to deeply tell them all thank yous for what they've done, the support to keep our, our entire population fit at times. It's been something to see, so thank everyone who's, who's chipped in.
Just a question, it doesn't affect our district per se, but the, the kids that go to school on Bran Island, are they going to school? Are they going to come to Golden Meadow or someplace? Can we help them in some fashion? Because it's going to be a long time for those kids to go to school.
So the, the way the law works is that any child can enroll in school once she become homeless. And, and once, once a child becomes identified as homeless, and, and if disqualified for a person is temporarily displaced as well, you can enroll in school anywhere. I don't know the specifics yet because we haven't opened the South LaFouche schools, but it is possible that a displaced Jefferson Parish school student who was previously enrolled in Bran Island could enroll at, say, South LaFouche is an example.
All right, as we close the meeting, we'd also like to say thanks to our community, our, our members of the parish, for all the kindness and patience and everything else that they've offered and grace to us in this time as we get on. And that's all. And this is for the board, we need to move on.